Twenty second, twenty twenty five, Harwich Planning Board meeting at Town Hall, seventy seven thirty-two Main Street, Harwich, Mass. This meeting of the Planning Board to be held in person will also be available for viewing via the go-to-meeting format. Members of the public with any interest in providing testimony regarding any item on the agenda should plan for in-person attendance. In addition, according to Mass law, anyone who intends to record the meeting must first notify the Chair, will then inform the other attendees at the start of the meeting. Say you're in recording? No? Okay. Can I have you join in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on the agenda continued from March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, and April eighth, twenty twenty-five is case PB twenty twenty-five dash oh four, Brian Langelier, owner seeks approval for site plan review special permit. The proposed project is to construct two additions to an existing building that shall increase seating capacity. The application is pursuant to the Code of Harwich, Sections three twenty-five dash fifty-one and three twenty-five dash fifty-five in Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Sections nine and eleven. The property is located at nine eighty-six Route twenty-eight, assessors map thirty-five dash C two dash zero, and the parcel is approximately point nine-nine acres. The parcel is in the Commercial Highway One, CH one zoning district, and the Massachusetts DEP is zone two Drinking Water Protection District.
Good evening.
Evening.
Brian Langelier, nine eighty-six Route twenty-eight, south Harwich, zero two six four five. I'm looking to hopefully get this approved tonight. Been here a couple, I've been there a couple times now, and I believe that everything is been resolved with the Planning Board and Christine, and we're looking to move forward over here with construction.
Okay. Christine?
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to draw your attention to the revised staff report as well as the engineering report from our consulting team over at VHB. And in fairness to the applicant, and I think for many of the applicants tonight, we just received VHB's report over this weekend, so many of the applicants are just receiving their evaluation for their stormwater and drainage this evening. But the applicant did submit a drainage report. They also submitted a revised site plan, and Matt, could you cue us up? They did address some of the directional and traffic items, or the location of the internal circulation for...
Just call it out.
Next? Next. And as you can see, nine eighty-six Route twenty-eight is centered right there. Next. And this is the site in question. Next. And some of the more recent conditions, not probably, I'm going to say maybe three years ago. Next. And so this was the site plan from the last time. And next. And next. And Matt, if you could zoom in on this, this is the revised site plan, so the deck, the primary highlights are the deck still covers the grease trap septic system. We did place some conditions as recommended by the Health Director. And, excuse me, they did clarify that they have thirty-five parking spots. They did move some of the employee parking to accommodate better traffic and safety, so that that was positive. And just a couple of other notes to highlight is that the building occupancy is, for the inside, is capped at seventy-six, so that includes customers and employees. And the, the total seating capacity indoors and outdoors will be kept at ninety-eight per the Health Department and the septic system currently at the site. And so some of the questions that VHB did, did raise relative to the drainage and identifying some of the drainage pits off of, off to the east side of the property, and they, they did have some concern that without any proper drainage or the catch basins, that there may be some puddling and some, when we have increased rain events. So it was just a note to consider for the applicant. And there were some other items that VHB did raise relative to the, to the drainage calculations and some questions that they did have for their engineering, for the applicant's engineering team that's enclosed in your packet.
Any comments from the board at all?
I just had one question through you to...
Yep.
Christine, are you comfortable with condition, the proposed condition eight, that that addresses the town engineer's comments?
Yes. So I did talk with Steve Rhodes from VHB, and he did, he was comfortable suggesting that prior to the final building inspection, stormwater management drainage plan will be approved by the town's consulting engineer. So if the applicant can work with his, through the applicant, through his engineering team, I think we can resolve some of the issues that were raised.
Okay. Anyone else on the board?
Condition through you, Mr. Chair. Condition ten is to change the lighting. Is that correct? Do I read that correct? Any existing or new must be dark sky compliant?
Yes.
And it isn't right now, correct?
I don't know. We didn't...
No, it is right now.
Okay.
It's, it's been changed.
Okay.
To be compliant.
It's a condition we should just make sure it's a standard condition that we use for all site plan review.
I could submit the specs with the, the final building inspection to the town. The way that it's been installed is dark sky compliant.
Okay, because there's different lighting there now, correct?
Correct, but then the old lighting was not dark, dark sky compliant, and new lighting is dark star, dark star compliant.
Okay.
So I can submit the certificate or the paperwork or the specs on the lighting at the final inspection.
Okay.
Or before that, if need be.
Just one second question. Based on the conditions, does the applicant still need the waiver on the parking and the stormwater management and drainage?
For the parking, no, they've met the...
Parking's okay.
Parking requirements, parking is okay. The drainage, it was just the waiver, I didn't, I should have removed that as a, as an update.
So we're, so if we're okay not approving waivers and just providing the conditions?
Correct.
You're comfortable with that?
Yes.
And you're comfortable with that?
Yes, I talked to the engineer today, and we're going to take care of that in the as-built. He had a couple tweaks to do with the drainage plan, but he's going to take care of it tomorrow, so.
Okay. Anyone else on the board? Anyone from the public? Okay. I think we're ready for a vote.
Okay, I'd love that we close the public hearing.
A sec, a second.
Okay, we have a vote and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
That's just a closing.
So I move that the Planning Board vote to adopt the proposed findings of fact. One, the applicant is Brian Langelier, owner. Two, the subject property is nine eighty-six Route twenty-eight, map thirty-five, parcel C two dash zero. Three, the property is located in the Commercial Highway One, CH dash one, and residential rural RR Massachusetts DEP Zone Two Drinking Water Protection Districts. The application is for site plan review special permit was filed with the town clerk on February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. Four, site plan with zoning compliance chart by Deanna Bometry, civil number four nine zero seven five, dated February fourth, twenty twenty-five. Five, comments from the zoning compliance officer dated March twelfth, twenty twenty-five. Comments from the Health Director dated March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Seven, revised building occupancy load signed by interim Building Commissioner Tom Wingard, dated March tenth, twenty twenty-five, and seating plan. Eight, the Planning Board held its public hearing on, beginning on March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, continued to April eighth, and continued to April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Nine, in addition, the Board finds that A, the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood; B, the specific, the specific site is an appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition; C, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians; and D, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. This includes the provision of appropriate sewage treatment facilities which provide denitrification when the permit granting authority deems such facilities necessary for protection of drinking water, supply wells, ponds, or saltwater embainments.
Okay, we have a vote on the proposed findings of fact. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? None.
And I move that we, that the Planning Board approve with conditions, case number PB twenty twenty-five dash zero four, Brian Langelier, nine eighty-six Route twenty-eight, for approval of a site plan review special permit pursuant to Sections three twenty-five dash fifty-five of the Code of the Town of Harwich, for property located at nine eighty-six Route twenty-eight, map thirty-five, parcel C two dash zero, in the Commercial Highway One and residential rural Mass DEP Zone Two Drinking Water Protection Districts. The decision is based on the aforementioned findings of fact and the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, and with the following conditions imposed relative to the special permit review. One, the applicant is Brian Langelier, owner. Two, the subject property is nine eighty-six Route twenty-eight, map thirty-five. Three, the property is located in the Commercial Highway One and residential rural Mass DEP Zone Two Drinking Water Protection Districts. The application for a site plan review special permit was filed with the town clerk on February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. Four, total building occupancy is seventy-six, including customers and employees. Five, the total allowed seating capacity for both inside and outside is ninety-eight seats per the Board of Health. Six, the applicant shall provide an affidavit agreeing that the town has made the applicant aware the deck coverage of the septic system and grease traps is a potential hardship created by the applicant. The affidavit shall be submitted to the Board of Health prior to the final inspection by the Building Department. Seven, it should be noted that the delivery area is a narrow lane to the west side of the property that could be a challenge for ease of access. Eight, prior to the final building inspection, a stormwater management and drainage plan shall be approved by the town's consulting engineer. Nine, the applicant shall provide total of thirty-one parking spots, as indicated on revised site plan dated April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Ten, any existing or new exterior lighting must be dark sky compliant per the Harwich Code. Eleven, the decision shall run with the property, conditions of approval shall be binding on future owners. Twelve, this special permit shall not take effect until a copy of the decision bearing the certification of the town clerk that twenty days have elapsed after the filing of the decision, and either that no appeal has been filed, or that an appeal has been filed within such time period, is recorded in the registry of deeds and indexed under the name of the property owner of record and the parcel address. Thirteen, this special permit shall lapse within two years, which is, which shall not include such time required to pursue or await the determination of an appeal referred to in General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section seventeen, from the grant thereof, if a substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced except for good cause, or in the case of a permit for construction, if construction has not begun by such date except for good cause. Changes, fourteen, changes to the site not authorized under this decision will require further Planning Board review and modification to this decision. And fifteen, the applicant shall conform to the inspection certification and as-built plan requirements outlined pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich.
Thank you. We have a vote, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Up next, we have case PB twenty twenty-five dash seven, seven eleven Main Street LLC manager, Samile G. Patel seeks approval for a site plan review special permit, fast food takeout special permit. The proposed project is to convert one existing commercial unit into two commercial units, one of which will be rented by a fast food slash takeout establishment. There'll be no exterior changes to exist, existing building or parking lot. The application is pursuant to the Code of Harwich, Sections three twenty-five dash fourteen oh, and Section three twenty-five dash fifty-one, Section three twenty-five dash fifty-five, and Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Sections nine and eleven. The property is located at seven eleven Main Street, assessors map forty-one, parcel D eight, and the parcel is approximately twenty-seven thousand four hundred forty-one square feet. The parcel is in the Commercial Village CB zoning district and within the Harwich Center Overlay District, HCOD. Welcome?
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the record, my name is Hal Chuba. I'm a consulting engineer with office is at one twelve State Road in Dartmouth, Massachusetts, and I represent the applicant tonight. With me is Mr. Patel, who's the manager and applicant for the property. So basically, we're here, I thought we're here to modify an existing special permit because I did not, I wasn't involved in filling out the application. Mr. Patel filled it out himself, and I think I wasn't, at that time, I was out of town.
Yeah.
So basically, we, if you recall, some of you might recall, back in twenty eighteen, we came to this Board for a special permit to construct a mixed-use building, about thirty-five hundred square foot per floor. It was a two-story building, the first, on the first store, it was, it was a convenience store with the deli, fast food restaurant. Second floor had the two, two two-bedroom apartments. The, the project was constructed during COVID, we all know. I'm sure you know where the building is, you drive by it every day. Since, so the, the deli was already approved back in twenty eighteen under a special permit. So it's up to the Board, I mean, we're not here whether you want to seek, this is a new special permit, or I believe it's probably more like, it's fine.
I think, I think it's moving locations, isn't it?
It's, no, they're still going to have a two, a fast food takeout restaurant permit for that site. They're, and they're also going to have a nail salon.
Yes.
So they're creating, they're going from one unit to two. It's an internal change, they're not changing anything to the parking or to the exterior of the building, or any landscaping or lighting. Why, it was a question I did have, staff doesn't have any administrative means to fast, fast track such a request. However, we did, this is a modification to a site plan review, so I think just with the information that we have, I would recommend that we can move this application forward. Our engineer didn't have any issues or comments. I didn't have any issues with the recommended conversion from one commercial unit to two.
Okay. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Yes, could you step forward, please? And if you could, just, there's a podium right there.
Oh.
Yep. And just state your name and your address and go from there.
My name is Peter Antonellis, and I live at one hundred Parallel Street, and I'm the butler on the south side of seven eleven. Mr. Patel has been a fabulous neighbor. The operation at seven eleven is perfectly fine. We don't have issues with that. In fact, when they came for the special, for the site plan or the special permit back in two thousand and eighteen, Mr. Patel was very accommodating. We were concerned about the, the location insofar as being the next-door neighbor, we wanted a screening, and Mr. Patel, he put up these wonderful trees, but trees grow slowly, and then we arranged with Mr. Patel, he put up a fence. So, you know, he's been very accommodating. Mr. Patel is a resident of Harwich. He's responsive to the neighborhood. With regard to moving that kind of operation from seven eleven over to seven fifteen, I didn't intend to come here tonight, but then when I saw the advertisement in the newspaper, I saw what appears to me a bit of a difference with the operation as it's currently being conducted over at seven eleven, and that would be that apparently you're going to rent it to, you rent the space in the seven fifteen building to a service provider who will be a food service vendor of some kind to do the fast food. I think that's different from what you currently have at seven eleven, because at seven eleven, you folks do it personally. So I don't know who's going to actually hold the license to do the fast food at that location. If it's Mr. Patel, I'm fine with that. If it's some independent party that he's renting with, I don't know what the arrangement is between Mr. Patel and that food service provider. I haven't seen the contract, I don't know anything about that, so I decided I should come. So that's my concern.
Would you like to speak to that?
Yeah.
So at the seven eleven, currently, we're going to turn into two units, and the deli section where the cooking will be happening, we're looking for a tenant, so we don't have anybody yet. We are, so we don't know who's going to come and who's going to be interested. Nobody has like, you know, shown interest yet, because we, we don't have an approval yet, so we can't even talk confidently to anybody. So we're waiting on that apart, and there's a little bit confusion. So what's going to happen at seven fifteen is, is just going to be like cold cut sandwiches, that's going to be to-go. Nobody's going to be sitting there to eat, or there's no cooking going to be happening at seven fifteen, the liquor store, the expansion we're looking at. But currently, we're talking about seven eleven.
Right.
And that's going to be two units, and the, the deli part will be rented out, but we don't know yet.
Christine, did you have anything?
I didn't have any issues outside of the, the fast food takeout will remain with the applicant in the, as the owner, is my understanding, so.
Well, that resolves my concern.
Okay.
If the owner of the license is, you know, Mr. Patel, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
No other concerns.
Okay. Anyone else from the public?
I move that we close the public hearing for, to be clear, for PB twenty twenty-five dash zero seven, which is seven eleven Main Street.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a vote in a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I would further move that the Planning Board vote to adopt the following proposed findings of fact. One, the applicant is Samuel Patel, manager, seven fifteen Main Street LLC. The subject, two, the subject property is seven eleven Main Street, map forty-one, parcel D eight. Three, the property is located in the Commercial Village CB and Harwich Center Overlay District, HCOD. The application for, for, the application for a modification, site plan review, special permit, and fast food takeout use special permit was filed with the town clerk on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Five, PB twenty nineteen dash twenty-eight, the Planning Board granted seven eleven Main Street a fast food takeout use special permit. Six, the Planning Board will, held its public hearing today on April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, at six PM, six thirty PM. Seven, in addition, the Board finds that A, the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood; B, the specific site is an appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition; C, there will be no nuisance or hazard to vehicles or pedestrians; D, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. This includes the provision of appropriate sewage treatment facilities which provide for denitrification when the permit granting authority deems such facilities necessary for protection of drinking water, supply wells, ponds, or saltwater embainments.
Okay, we have a vote. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So finally, I move that we approve with conditions PB twenty twenty-five dash zero seven, seven eleven Main Street LLC, seven eleven Main Street, for approval of a modification to site plan review special permit pursuant to Sections three twenty-five dash fifty-five for the Town of Harwich, for property located at seven eleven Main Street, map forty-one, parcel D, in the Commercial Village and Harwich Center Overlay District. This decision is based on the aforementioned findings of fact, that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, and with the following conditions imposed relative to the site, the special permit review. One, the applicant is Samuel Patel, manager, seven fifteen Main Street LLC. Two, the subject property is seven eleven Main Street, map forty-one, parcel D eight. Three, the property is located in the Commercial Village and Harwich Center Overlay District. Four, the application for a modification to the site plan review special permit and fast food takeout use special permit was filed with the town clerk on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Five, the proposal is to modify an existing mixed-use building with one commercial use to include two commercial uses, nail salon and fast food takeout restaurant dash deli with no seats. Six, the fast food takeout permit shall comply with all Board of Health requirements. Seven, this decision shall run with the property, conditions of approval shall be binding on future owners. Eight, this modification to a special permit shall not take effect until a copy of the decision bearing the certification of the town clerk that twenty days have elapsed after the filing of the decision, and either that no appeal has been filed, or that an appeal has been filed within such time period, is recorded with the registry of deeds and indexed under the name of the property owner of record and the parcel address. Nine, the special permit shall lapse within two years, which shall not include such time required to pursue or await the determination of an appeal referred to in General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section seventeen, from a grant thereof, if a substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced except for good cause, or in the case of a permit for construction, if construction has not begun by such date except for good cause. Ten, changes to the site not authorized under this decision will, will require further Planning Board review and modification to this decision. Eleven, the applicant, the applicant shall conform to the inspection certification and as-built plan requirements outlined pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich. And twelve, further any provisions of the site plan review special permit, mixed-use development special permit, fast food takeout restaurant special permit, and Harwich Center Overlay special permit, case PB twenty nineteen dash eighteen, twenty nineteen dash twenty-eight, PB twenty twenty dash thirty-one, and PB twenty twenty-one dash zero four, not modified herein, shall remain in full force and effect.
Thank you.
Ms. Lasky, if I may, I think I heard no seating with the conditions.
That's what we had. Was that a...
I believe the original, right, the original one was approved with seating, correct? And I think we showed twelve seating on, on the floor layout, and...
Just throw you back to the planner.
Okay.
It may have been a, it may have been a copy paste issue.
It may have been a cut.
Okay. I just, yeah, I think the next, yes.
So then let's go back to, that was item number...
Five.
Number five. So I want to revise the condition number five to read, the proposal is to modify an existing mixed-use building with one commercial use to include two commercial uses, nail salon and fast food takeout restaurant dash deli with no more than twelve seats?
Correct. And they did have ample parking as well for their employee and for the number of seats estimated.
All right. So I think we've corrected that on five.
Mm-hmm.
I think that completes it.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a vote on the special permit with the conditions, and do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay. And I think you're up next. Don't go anywhere. Case PB, up next is case PB twenty twenty-five dash oh eight, seven fifteen, Harwich LLC manager, Samile Patel, seeks approval for a site plan review special permit, fast food takeout special permit. The proposed project is convert two existing commercial units into one commercial unit within addition, addition of eleven hundred twenty square feet and reconfiguration of the parking lot.
within addition of 1,120 square feet and reconfiguration of the parking lot. The new commercial unit will contain a convenience store with a fast food takeout deli. The application is pursuant to the code of Harwich Sections 325-14, 0, and Sections 325-51, Section 325-55, and Mass. General Law Chapter 48, Sections 9 and 11. The property is located at 7/15 Main Street, assessors map 41 parcel D7 and -1, and the parcel is approximately 31,984 square feet. The parcel is in the Commercial Village, CB zoning district with the Harwich Center Overlay District, HCOD.
Again, Mr. Chair, further record, Hal Tuber, consulting engineer, representing the applicant on this application. This is 7/15 Main Street. I'm sure you're all familiar with the, with the project. That's the liquor store slash commercial plaza on 7/15. Back in 2021, also, we came to this board for a special permit to modify the, the building and add it to a mixed-use building to add two, two-bedroom apartments on the second floor. And that was constructed back in 2022. Yeah, yeah, 2022. At that time, I think also, Mr., the building has approximately 6,000 square feet on the first floor. And it was occupied by the liquor store. They had a small office that was for an interior decorator that she relocated actually from 7/15 to 7/21, which was also a special permit from this board back in 2021 to convert the old past office, if you recall, to a combination retail apartment. So, that unit was vacant. She moved out and there was another unit that was occupied by a beauty salon. Since then, I think Mr. Patel would like to expand, move the salon from 7/15 to 7/11, which that was the previous application, and expand the store and also add about 1,200 square feet, 1,165 square feet, square the existing building and to expand the existing liquor store. And part of that addition was also, he proposed to add a small deli. And again, I need to clarify that because I think it's confusing. So, it's, again, I think in the town of Harwich, they don't have any definitions of fast restaurant or they don't differentiate between deli or, so basically, just to clarify, it's not a, there'll be no cooking and at that facility, it'll be like a cold cut. Somebody might come in, order sandwich, they, they give them the sandwich, they take it out, and they consume it off premises. So, there's no seating, no eating on premises, no cooking on premises. So, basically, it's a retail, like, almost like a prepackaged food that you see maybe at any convenience store or gas station or, but again, we need to resolve this with the Board of Health in terms of whether we need to expand on the existing septic system or a grease trap. And again, this is, you know, this board, whatever you move with, I'm sure there'll be conditions that we can, you know, that we have to get approval from the Board of Health or Town Engineer or whatever other boards that you are. I mean, we'll work with the Town Consultant Engineer, we'll work everybody to, to resolve any issues. But, so basically, we're adding a square in the building. We did go in front of Historical Commission and Ms. Slavsky was there. She can contest to that, right? And that was approved by, by the Historical Commission to, to modify the, the appearance of the building. With the proposed modification, we will have approximately 7,000 square feet of retail on, on the property on the first floor. The two apartments would remain. In order to accommodate the parking spaces that we need, we are reconfiguring the existing parking. And by doing reconfiguration, it's only the, actually, the pavement marking. If you look at the south part of the, the east part of the property, we had some parallel parking and we're turning those into, into 90 degrees. And basically, all the addition would take place in areas that were previously covered with impervious services. There'll be basically hardly no changes to the grades, no increase to impervious on the property. And again, it's under review by the town peer engineer. And I believe, we haven't gotten any, any comments, but once we get the comments, we'll work with the town peer engineer to resolve any issues. Again, I believe this is a special permit because of the definition of the fast food or the deli that we're adding and the expansion of the, retail is allowed as of right in the, in the CB district, so, you know, but deli or...
Fast food takeout special permit.
Takeout, it's a special permit. And again, we meet the required parking, the lighting, the landscape, and hopefully, you know, we'll get your positive approval on this.
Okay. Christine?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the project is here for a site plan special permit modification, fast food takeout. And the location is at 7/15 Main Street, map and parcel 41D7-1. It's, the project is located in the Commercial Village in the Harwich Center Overlay District. And the proposed modification to the site plan to include two additions, one at 1,120 square feet. And there's a small addition in the rear, just to box, to finish out, to, to corner the building, a 45-foot square bump out in the rear. The modification includes the reconfiguration of the existing parking lot to increase the existing parking from 23 to 36. And the proposal does include a special permit for a fast food takeout unit. The lot area is 31,984 square feet. And the applicant is Samuel Patel. And he, so he seeks an approval for the modification and the fast food takeout special permit. So, if you will, do a quick run through. So, this is the town of Harwich. You have the Atlantic Ocean to the south, Pleasant Lake Road in the middle. And Matt, if you could. Oh, I got it. So, the location is on Main Street on Harwich. So, this is just a quick snapshot of the development.
Actually, I think you're on the Bradley Angeliers.
Sorry.
Matt? That's 90 seconds.
I'm sorry.
That was nice. Atlantic Ocean.
I have a flash. Would that help?
They're uploading it, so.
Oh, okay.
No, we'll be good. Thank you.
Okay. It's slow, okay.
My apologies for the mistake.
PB 2025-08, 7/15 Main Street. Yes? And then is it this one with the underscore? It's two.
That's the previous one, probably. Two sheets. It's PB 2008, 7/11, two sheets.
Let's try this again. We're in the town of Harwich.
Matt, can you move the moving of the pages? Okay, here we go. So, here is Harwich Center. The red dot is 7/15 Main Street, next. And the building is with a red dot highlighted on the roof at 7/15 Main Street. You can see that there are other surrounding commercial and residential uses, next. And this is a closer shot of 7/15, 17 Main Street on your right. And you can see that there's one access point for entrance and exit. And the parking to the south side will be changed from parallel parking to angle, to angled parking. And the building, if, if you can see where the addition is going to take place on the west side rear part of the building as well as the smaller bump out will be on the east, south side of the building, next. Okay, so to the site plan on the left, those are the existing conditions right now. And if you look at the proposed conditions, you can see the proposed addition, which is blocked out in black, on, again, on the east side to the south, south end of the building. And the smaller bump out is on the west side of the building, also to the rear. And you can see the parking, I'm sorry. You can also see where the parking has changed. And there's, will also be additional landscaping surrounding the property as well. VHP will be looking at some of the turning radiuses for ease of access, particularly for delivery trucks, just to make sure that there's enough space, there's enough turnaround for vehicular access and deliveries.
Okay. And so, these are the architectural renderings from the, from Main Street looking forward. And I believe that's the south side or the, I'm sorry, the east. I'm getting, it's looking at the south side of the building, next. Sorry. And so, this is looking fro, so if you, from the west side is the top and you can see the addition on the right-hand side of the building on the first floor. Okay. And so, just to follow up on some of the discussions, the applicant did indicate that they were looking for a fast food special permit. The only comments that we did get from other town staff came from the Board of Health and indicating that the septic systems, septic system would have limitations for 1,000 per day, 1,000 gallons per day in terms of flow. And that the applicant, depending on the, the use of the fast food and what's being served, the septic system internally or externally would need to include grease straps and be upgraded. The, so my recommendation for tonight would be to condition that the permit be conditioned for limited use per the Board, per approval from the Board of Health.
Through you.
Yes, go ahead.
Just a question. If the, the engineers haven't, haven't approved the site plan and the turning radiuses?
So, I did talk with our engineer and he also didn't, didn't anticipate any substantial issues. The drainage and the stormwater had already been previously conditioned and evaluated through previous site plan processes. And he was willing to provide further comments and work with the applicant so that we could do a conditional approval this evening.
So, my only concern is if they've got to change something on that site plan and we've closed the public hearing, aren't we, aren't we putting them back in a situation where they've got to come back and reopen it and do another public hearing? Because we're approving a site plan, right? Or a modification of a site plan. So, if the site plan has to change, that's my, that was my one concern.
Then we can continue the public hearing if that's, if that's, no, if, if, if VHP comes back and they need to modify the, the plan that's been submitted, then in fairness to the board, I would agree with that.
That's my only concern. If the, the engineers come back and they make you change something, we've closed the public hearing and we've given you a decision, you're going to have to come back here and readvertise, come back, new, new public hearing and the whole thing. So, would you be able to come back the end of the month? I think our next meeting is the 27th of May.
We have a meeting on the 13th, but I'm asking for any continuances to take place on the 27th.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
Would that be okay?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I personally just think it's safer.
Yep.
My colleagues have me on the phone.
Because they would have to come back and...
Well, if we close the public hearing, we give them a decision, then we can't change anything without a new application, a new application fee, and new advertising and all of, and all of that. So, that would be my concern.
Any other comments from the board at all? Any comments from the public?
Actually, I have a question. Is there a 7/13 in between 7/11 and 7/15? So, according to the deeds that you've submitted, both, those are two separate parcels owned by two separate owners. Am I misreading this?
7/13?
No, 7/11 and 7/15. You said there's no 7/13, right?
No, no, no.
So, 7/11 and 7/15 are together, being operated as a single business or...
No, they are independent.
Okay.
Separate ownership, right?
Yeah. We own it, but it's owned by a different company.
LLC.
That's what I noticed. It was a little confusing. I get it now. Thank you.
So, it's 7/15 Harwich LLC. And the general, the manager is Samuel Patel. And...
PB something on the other.
7/11 Main Street LLC is for 7/11 Main Street, a separate LLC. They're two separate LLCs, both with Mr. Patel as the general manager.
I think we might have had a typo on the, on the prior. So, we may want to check the script if it was error on. It might have said 7/15.
Okay.
I think on the, on the 7/11 findings.
It did, actually.
So, all, all in the motion to close the public hearing?
No. So, I would extend the motion to continue the public hearing.
Continue, oh, sorry.
From May 27, 2025.
Continue.
No earlier than 6:30 PM.
But, yes.
I still had other people that wanted to talk, so I'll withdraw my motion.
Yes, of you.
So, Dr. Murray Johnson, I'm in a butter, 7/19 Main Street, Cape Pediatric Dental Associates. And my concern is a question about traffic. And I have to be concerned about traffic. We have pediatric patients, we have infants to elderly, because we do general dentistry as well. And my concern is the increased traffic. Have we done a traffic survey here as per the special permit definitions? That, that we have to know, are we increasing the traffic? Do we have a different traffic pattern? That is a, an interesting pass-through. It's a right-of-way historically. It still is a right-of-way. It is not a public street. It goes between 7/15 and 7/19. So, my question is, and we park, so we have two parking areas. We have a parking area behind our building, behind 7/19, between the dental clinic and the hot tub. between the dental clinic and the hot tub business. And then we have parking that goes from west to east into the building, into the side of the, west side of the building. And seven fifteen has four spaces for residential above on the second floor, opposite those parking spaces. So we're constraining that area. And then we have the through traffic coming from parallel street and coming from Main Street, because people do drive through there a lot, shortcuts and whatnot. So if we're increasing the traffic flow there, there's, there is my concern. With little people all day long from, in my office, getting out of cars, going around the backside of cars, pretty close to that traffic pattern there. And now we're going to increase, are we increasing the traffic flow? I don't think we have, we have no impact from the seven eleven Main Street. But I'm wondering if we're, what kind of impact we're going to have on the, from the seven fifteen? Are we going to have a lot more traffic? I don't know what's anticipated. There you have my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As part of the site plan, traffic is an issue. And in my evaluation, given the current use and the commercial area of this being in a commercial zone, and it's a permitted use, that I didn't feel that this would increase the traffic in any substantial way. And I recommended that we did not require a traffic study. And I did confer with our consultant, VHP, and they agreed with that assessment as well. So I'm not a traffic engineer.
No, nor am I.
I, I didn't think it, it, it changed the level of ser, level of service for Main Street and the number of trip generations.
I, I, I agree. I mean, we do this for, I do mostly gas stations, convenience stores, Dunkin's and drive-thrus, you know, we, I can provide you with, I can look at the trip generation. I, I'll be, I won't be realistic if I'll say there'll be no increase in traffic, but there will be some insignificant increase. Compare that to the traffic on, on Main Street.
No, no, no. That's twenty-four seven.
Yeah. No, no, I mean, it's, most of the traffic for fast food, this, this type of business, most of the traffic is from pass-by traffic. So you're not getting people driving from Dennis or just to come to this. So it's mostly people that live in the area, they work in the area. So they pop in, you know, like swing by and get, so you're not going to get the traffic increase. And also, I agree, I mean, you, you're concerned, you know, there's something, you know. But parking, we have the parking required, and they'll look at the turning radius, and they, they see an issue, we can work with the site. I might angle the parking in a way, so we might have a, you know, so it's not going to have any impact on you, but, so.
Well, if you need turning radius diagrams, I have them. I have them because of my stuff twenty years ago. Oh, yeah. Turning radius for, for tractor trailers coming out of, coming out of seven fifteen.
It's already, they already have the, the delivery come in and they leave, you know, an issue. So it's not, really, it's the same business, we're just expanding by a thousand square feet, but I...
Well, really, all you're doing is squaring off the building.
Squaring off the building, yeah, so.
If, in simple terms, it's squaring off the building.
Yeah, yeah. So I, you don't have to worry.
Okay, all right.
But I, I, I mean, I, you have any rights to be concerned, and so...
Sure. If I didn't bring it up, I would be reticent in not bringing it up, of course.
Yeah, no, we don't see any issues. And again, the peer review agree with that, with the town plan and, you know, and everyone, so.
Well, thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public?
And I would, I would move that we continue the public hearing on PB twenty twenty-five dash zero eight to May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, no earlier than six thirty P.M.
We have a vote in a second. All those in favor? Aye. Closed? Yeah, that's good.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we have case number PB twenty twenty-five dash zero nine. Jeff Lang and Sandra Wykoff, owners through David J. Crispin, P.E. of BSC Group Incorporated, agent, seek approval for site plan review special permit. The proposed project is to construct ninety-three space parking lot and perimeter pedestrian path. The application pursuant to the Code of Harwich, section three twenty-five dash fifty-one, section three twenty-five dash fifty-five, and Mass General Law, chapter forty A, sections nine and eleven. The property is located at three ninety-seven Route twenty-eight, Assessor's Map thirteen, parcel D dash one, and the parcel is approximately one hundred thirty-six thousand seven hundred seventy-eight square feet. The parcel is in the Commercial Highway one, CH one, and Residential High Density RH one zoning districts.
Jeff Lang, Riverside Drive, but I've got David Crispin from BSC to provide some presentation and hopefully be able to answer any technical questions.
And Mr. Chair, we do have the applicant's presentation loaded up, so if David's ready to present.
Okay, great.
Go ahead, David.
I am ready, and we will be very brief. Good evening. Three ninety-seven Main Street, this is the old Handler's Auto Salvage Yard. I think you have a pretty good idea of where this is. It's just to the north of Allen Harbor there, up around Saw Marsh. And I am happy to report that we closed the conservation hearing the other day, so we are expecting an order of conditions on this. And if we can go to the next slide, I will give you a brief history of this. Many of you, if you live in town, probably remember this is Handler's Auto Salvage. And this is a Google Earth photo, but it shows you pretty much what was there sometime for the last, close to fifty years perhaps. There was a big metal building on it, another small one in the middle portion, and lots and lots of cars that went back and forth. The soil was all bare. I was the LSP that worked to clean this site up, and we, we did clean it up. And if you go to the next slide, you will see the white rectangle in the bottom left-hand corner. That's an activity and use limitation. Basically, the soil was contaminated with, with, with heavy metals, and those were collected and isolated in that corner, so they basically can't be touched. And that creates a condition of no significant risk. So we went to the Conservation Commission for that and the DEP, and we kind of master-planned this site out. That master-planning rough graded the site, part of it, and conceptually put a foot trail around the foot, bottom corner, that kind of yellow squiggly line that goes across very bottom of the site. It also permitted a lot of plantings on the edge of that. If we can go to the next slide, this is kind of where we are today. So again, the activity and use limitation is in the yellow square on the left side, and the applicant wants to build a parking lot. And Jeff, you can explain, when I'm done with this, maybe what the, the reason for this is. But as far as the planning board is concerned, this site does drain away from the highway, drains all to the back bottom of the site. And it does include filling of the flood plain, which I said Conservation Commission voted to approve that. So if we can go to the next slide, I'll give you a quick overview on the drainage system. There's a number of catch basins on the site, and they all drain to a subsurface recharge system, which is kind of showing a typical image of what these look like. You've probably seen them, big blue Quonset huts packed in crushstone. And that will be pretty much underneath with a concrete slab of where the old building is. From a stormwater perspective, the system is designed to reduce the runoff from the Handler Auto Savage Savage condition significantly, to the point where in a hundred-year storm, the water going to the marsh is reduced by about nine cubic feet per second. And we can go to the next slide. The, from a traffic perspective, the intent is for the, the western entrance to be a one-way in. We, the reason for that is this, even though the site distance is adequate looking up to the west and location, cars are coming just over the crest. So we really wanted people to do, to be crossing traffic further down when they're pulling out and coming back and forth. So the idea is that this would be a clockwise, counterclockwise, pardon me, counterclockwise traffic circulation through the parking lot. And that's, that's really, in a nutshell, in the bottom right-hand corner, there's a little pink area. That is a rain garden that would take the runoff from that foot trail that we talked about. And again, that was approved by the Conservation Commission the other day. So you've got, you've got the set of plans. That's the project in a nutshell, and I'm certainly open for questions, whatever you like. And I just, did just get the report from your consultant yesterday morning. I haven't had a chance to completely report back on that, but I do believe we can comply with all of the conditions and requests that they have asked for.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you. Matt, when do you have a chance? Okay, so the applicant, the application is case PB two oh two five zero nine, site plan review, special permit. And the applicant's agent is David Crispin from BCS Group Incorporated. The project is located at three nine seven Route twenty-eight. The zoning district is in the commercial, the project is located in the Commercial Highway CH one in the Residential High Density RH one zoning districts, as well as the Flood Zone A and E. The development type is the removal of a building foundation slab and bit, bit of this parking lot for development of a ninety-three-spot parking, parking lot with perimeter walking path plus a concrete slab for future commercial development building, approximately thirteen thousand nine hundred and fifty square feet. The lot area size is one hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight square feet. Again, the project owners is three nine seven Main Street LLC, Jeff Lang and Sandra Wykoff, owners through David Crispin, BCS Group. And so the Mass General Applicable Laws, chapter forty A, section nine, and the Code of Harwich, zoning bylaws, section three twenty-five fifty-one, special permit, and three twenty-five fifty-five, site plan review. The project, again, is located at three nine seven Route twenty-eight in the Assessor's Map, thirteen, map thirteen, parcel D dash one. The, the project was submitted to town boards. We didn't have any departments noting any cause of concern or additional comments. The project is also under review, as noted with, by the applicant, with the Conservation Commission, which was approved with an order, by order of intent. And the project will also need a slipboard, stormwater, and illicit discharge permit as well. The project history has undergone extensive cleanup and remediation from heavy materials such as lead and zinc within the soils and groundwater as part of a Massachusetts contingency plan. And there was a finding that there's been no risk, but the placement of activity in limited use is on part of the site. And so with that, a couple of the highlights for the zoning, the commercial parking lot is allowed by right in the CH one zoning district. The, the site plan review was triggered by the reconfiguration of the parking lot. And so there will be a single exiting curb that proposes to be replaced. There'll be two access points that are, will be twenty-two feet wide. And the part of the access points out onto Route twenty-eight will require a highway layout access permit from Mastot, so...
Which has been submitted.
Okay, great.
We have submitted that.
And, and any paving also will require a permit from the highway department as well. The parking layout is ninety-three spaces with four, four handicap spots, as mentioned. We did ask, or we did mention to the applicant to include internal traffic circulation arrows to highlight on the plan. So we will ask for part of the site plan to be revised. And the loading and unloading areas, even though the commercial building development isn't before us tonight, it should also be accounted for, along with a highlight of dumpster for future development, just to give us an idea of what the future use of the project will be. The stormwater management and drainage was reviewed by VHP, and so the applicant is going to take some extra time to evaluate that and respond back to the board, so we may need to continue tonight's public hearing. But the applicant did submit a traffic study using the Institute of Transportation Engineering's standards for retail building of thirteen thousand nine hundred and fifty square feet. It's estimated at eight hundred and eighty trips per day. We did note that some of the trip generation should also include, for the peak season, as well as the trip generation should account for future employees of the site as well. And it's our understanding that the parking lot will be utilized for overflow parking for Harwich Port area temporarily. Is that correct? Okay.
That's correct.
And there were some issues of access and safety for pedestrians that had been raised. There was also a letter from a Harwich resident who also highlighted that in your packet tonight. The applicant for the site plan did also include landscaping as part of sections three twenty-five forty-three of the Harwich zoning code, to include trees, shrubs, ground cover, and, as well as providing appropriate screening for the parking area. The applicant's landscaping plan is being evaluated and conditioned also by the Harwich Conservation Commission, so we will include any conditions that they have as part of this site plan review as well. The utilities and lighting plan identified all of the connections in water and electric. It was not clear if there was any gas line connection to the site. There was a gas meter, so it just flagged a question, that's all. And the lighting plan will include ground-mounted lighting poles up to fifteen feet high, and they will be downward shielded per Harwich code. And the, given the Conservation Commission and the town's consulting engineer evaluation, we should wait for the, give the applicant an opportunity to also respond to that. I did have a quick PowerPoint, so sorry. Matt, if you could, yeah. So then, if you can switch to the next page. And so this is three seventy-nine for the address. And again, next page, and the site. And you can see that it abuts wetlands as well as watershed. And it's along Route twenty-eight, right before Sisson Road, which is up on the left, and Dewan Road, which is almost across the way. And Harwich Port is off to the right-hand side, going easterly, going easterly along Route twenty-eight. Next. And this is another picture of the site with the concrete slab, next. And this is the site plan. They will include a walking path along the perimeter in south side of the lot. And so there will be adjacent lighting in addition to the ninety-three parking spots. And there will be four handicap parking spaces. And again, there'll be two twenty-two feet curb cuts off of Route twenty-eight. Next, sorry. And this is the landscaping plan, so they'll have low-lying shrubs in the, to the front, closest to Route twenty-eight, as well as various trees and other shrubs throughout the site. Okay, and that was... Okay, and that was my presentation, so if there are any questions from the board members.
Any questions from the board at all?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead.
So this is quite a large parking lot. Probably the largest I've seen since I've been on the board. And it looks like the parking lot comes before the building, correct?
Correct.
And the building is quite large, at 13,000 square feet, correct?
That's just what is the maximum that can fit on the remainder of the parcel and stay away from the, the part where we can't penetrate again, where we buried all the lead and the zinc portions.
Correct.
So.
So that's the maximum, correct?
That's the maximum, yeah.
So this, the temporary public parking will alleviate some parking demand in the Harwich Port area. So my question is, it's almost three-quarters of a mile to the Harwich Port Center, and there's no sidewalk. So how is this alleviating parking? I feel like I'm approving a parking lot for a building that doesn't exist yet. So it's a little chicken and egg from my perspective?
Yes, you know, I mean, our intent is to have taken what was a junkyard.
True.
That Brownfield site that was toxic, and work our way towards it becoming something that the whole town is proud of and is happy to have there. We, we continue to try to make sure that all of the technology that is available, so the stormwater runoff management program is top-notch. We've made sure that we've got access to a handicap accessible walkway so people can enjoy the view and be there.
Which is, all of that is completely commendable.
But to get through all of the permitting processes that are required with changing the septic systems and sewage, which the town hasn't really quite said exactly what their sewage system is going to look like, other than they are putting pipes under the road on 28. So hopefully, there will be someplace where that goes that will help us figure out what's the best use for this property, that the most amount of people in the town of Harwich can still use it, enjoy it, see the view that you have from there when you're driving down 28, and then it's not condominiums out to the road. So that, I mean, that's where, we wanted to make sure that we are continuing to progress and improve the site and allow people to continue using it.
Which is all commendable.
Without waiting till the final thing gets done with the final design and partners showing up. So that's, that's why we're still evolving. We know there's a parking problem in town. I know Chatham had successfully ran a program where they had people in the height of the season running golf carts on people to be able to get employees back and forth in the morning and the evenings to the downtown establishments. So our goal will be to find if there are partners that want to have their employees park there and help us fund shuttle. I'd love for the sidewalks that are going all the way out to the east side of town go all the way out to the west side of town. But I don't know when that will happen.
Well, just as a question.
Yeah.
So I understand you buy right, you have, you can do a commercial parking lot. That's not my question.
Yeah.
I feel like I'm approving a parking lot for a building that doesn't exist yet. So that's kind of the chicken and egg for me. And the parking, the sidewalks that are just going in now was, now we're at 11 years that we've waited for those sidewalks, right? So my question is, kind of, this is a big parking lot. It makes use of that space, it's gonna, there's a beautiful view, absolutely. But I'm just waiting for the other shoe to fall, like what's, what building's gone there?
We don't know yet. There, well, there, there is none, but wouldn't have to still come back through with all of the plans and regulatory world stamps.
But we usually, we usually approve the parking lot with the building, so you kind of know which, both pieces. So my question is, I only know one piece, so that's why I'm asking you.
Because all we know is one piece as well. That, and we, anybody that we've asked to partner with, their first question is, well, how much parking can you have? So.
So you're going for the maximum parking? Is that correct, for this future use?
Not necessarily, because if you build a smaller than the, a building smaller than the 13,000. David, what was the number?
The footprint is about 6,000, so that 13,000 is a two-story idea.
So if, if we build less than a 6,000-square-foot area, there certainly would be some more room for parking in that same vicinity.
I'm just personally, as a member of the board, I'm wondering if I'm approving something, and then there's going to be Home Depot that comes next or something. I'm just.
No.
That's my concern. Because it's a very large parking lot.
But that's not what we want to have there.
Okay.
So that's, so I mean, the easiest thing for us to have done would have been to build a whole bunch of condominiums and max it out because of the zoning on it.
Right.
But that blocks the view, and it makes it a beautiful site for six or seven or eight, 10 families. And we don't think that that's what the downtown of Harwich Port needs, so.
And it's been spectacular since the building has been down that we've had that view. That's great.
That's right. And, you know, we had a cornhole tournament there that we had so many people then say, wow, how, how did that go for you? You know, it's like, so that might be the kind of events that we have, proquet parties. I don't, you know, it's like, those are some of the things that we can do with parking with an empty site. That right now, where it's, you know, it's kind of dangerous with the way that the, the old cement pad doesn't really let you go use the property very well at all.
Okay.
There are a lot of, I think, opportunities for partnering with other people about how do we creatively use that parking spot? Maybe there's a way to shuttle people to the beach that we don't have quite the crowding in the downtown parking lots of people stealing the parking lots from the businesses in town, and we help move the, the parking for shuttling to the beaches down to there.
So the use is to be determined.
The use is to be determined. This is really kind of, it's one more step in the cleaning up and clearing of this property and turning it back into something that we're all proud of.
Okay.
That, that's all.
Yep, Christine.
It should be clarified that the trip, the ITE study and the square footage was based off of the assumption that the building would be retail, and that's what determined the 93 parking spots by the square footage of the building. And also for the trip generation for the 818 daily trips, that was also based off of ITE use for retail, commercial building.
Except it was kind of backed in. We did the parking lot and then backed it into the size of the building. It didn't go building size to that.
Just a question through you, Christine. Is retail, does retail fall in our, in our highest parking requirements or middle-of-the-road parking requirements?
I think it's more the middle-of-the-road. I think restaurants tend to be higher.
Tend to be higher.
Yes.
I, I kind of have the same problem and has. It's a solution without a problem at the moment. It's, it, it's not close enough to the, to the, the, the district, the, the business district to really have people park there and then walk, they're going to walk up to the lanyard, they're going to walk up to Tasty Freeze, or, or, you know, it's just without, I don't know. It seems, this, it's like, there's something that I don't know what question to ask. I, I, I'm kind of wondering whether or not building the, and the intention is to build it now before any decision is get, is made about building a structure. Is that correct? Build the parking lot.
Oh.
I have to wonder whether it's being built because there's a possibility that it will be zoned, parking would be zoned out of that area, or there'd be some superfund issue or some, it, it's just, I don't know. I'm having a problem understanding the, the investment in just putting, in just doing that with no real plan for return or revenue from that investment just isn't clicking for me. I, I don't really get it. So it doesn't, I'm just talking. It's, it doesn't, has nothing to do with what we're here to do tonight, and, and it won't influence my, my decision. But usually, when somebody brings a plan here, I understand. I go, okay, yeah, they're going to build a store, they'll subdivide the one store into two stores, more revenue, more whatever. And I, this one I just don't get, so. I wish you luck, it's great. I guess it's better to have a parking lot there than nothing, but.
Mary?
Just clarification. The application is for primary use is parking, is a parking lot with a walking path. Correct?
That is correct.
That's the application.
That is the application.
Okay.
And parking is a matter of rights?
Commercial, commercial parking lot is allowed in the Commercial Highway.
So especially, so this is required strictly because of the.
The reconfiguration.
The reconfiguration of what already exists.
Correct.
So that's really what we're limited to at, at the moment.
Correct.
And you're still recommending a continuance till the end of the month?
Yes, based off, to get, to allow the applicant to.
We don't really have a site plan.
We really don't, okay.
Well, we have a site plan.
We'll allow the applicant to follow up with our consulting engineer.
Are there any comments from the public? Yeah. State your name and.
Hi, I'm Lisa Nichols, and I live at, my husband and I live at 15 Doane, which is right across the street, First House on Doane. So I'm very familiar with this area. And I just want to say, the cleanup in that, in that area is beautiful. I mean, what you have all done to get rid of that building and just all the chemicals, the heavy metals, I mean, it's fabulous. But I'm listening to this, and I'm here, my husband and I are here, because we're saying to ourselves, 93 parking spaces, that's massive. That's a massive parking lot. And what is going there? Is it a Home Depot? Like, so what is happening there? I'm just, so, you know, I, I've heard the question asked, I've heard all your responses, but we're going to keep asking. I mean, I, I want to know what's going to be right across the street. And I hear you say that you don't want to block the views, that you wouldn't want it to be condos. But I guess where I'm confused is if you put up a massive retail building as well, like, you're still blocking it. I'd rather look at condos, to be honest with you, than look at like some crazy, you know, very busy, like, large building that's just retail. So I, I guess I'm just confused. I just think it's crazy to build 93 spaces without having any idea what's going there. I mean, you want to sell the space, you can just show a plan and say, you know, here, you can put 93 spaces in while we build out whatever this thing's going to be, so. And the other thing I'll just say for the record, since I live here, I walk every single day. I can tell you firsthand what it's like walking on that street. The only way to walk from that space to town is to walk through the parking lot safely, is to walk through the parking lots of Sam's Auto and Dairy Queen, go past that, and then jump across the street to the sidewalk. And that turn, you, when I cross over 28, there are times when like you have to run for it because you don't see the cars coming around the corner. So without, I will say, without a sidewalk there, that is a very dangerous place to ever assume anybody's going to park and walk. Even to walk to the lanyard, it's actually not, it's just, it's a little crazy there, so. Just want to add that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So if, when there is another plan, we will, as a batter's, will we be informed on what's coming up? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
So my name's Craig Nichols, live same location, 15 Doane. The only thing I would add is to, to use a 93-spot parking lot for unknown other general-use parking for the town seems, seems absolutely crazy. To think you could take golf carts and drive them down Main Street, you can't, you can't even walk there now. To use that parking lot for general-use parking with no defined reasoning makes, makes absolutely no sense. You could, you could park anything there. So without definition of what's going to be parked there is another completely unknown factor that should be decided before, you know, a parking lot goes in there, I would imagine. So I just don't understand the multi-use parking solution. What it's going to do, who's going to use it? Doesn't sound like there's anybody lined up from a business perspective that's going to partner with this as of yet. So that's my concern.
Thank you.
Good evening, Paul Lagg, One Winseppit Road. Just want to agree with the comments before. I, I live on the corner of Winseppit and Doane Road. I walk down to the end. I cross the street at 28 right there. It's a dangerous intersection. My concerns are mostly with traffic. Yeah, traffic impacts particularly on Doane Road and the, and the surrounding areas. I do commend the owners for what they've done, the cleanup, the demolition of the building has been really a public benefit. And I apologize, I came in late, so I apologize if, Finney, this was already gone over. But I guess my recommendation or suggestion to the board would be that you should look at this for what it is currently. It's, it's a proposal to operate a commercial parking lot, which is an allowed use. Not to look at what the potential uses are. That's to be determined, and that's fine. But I think the way to look at this is, for a certain amount of time, that they want to operate a commercial parking lot, which is an allowed use. But if you put it in that context, then the board can look at what the site's going to be, how many parking spaces are viable to run that as a, as a use on its own. And then the board can start to look at things like hours of, well, site setup, number of spaces, hours of operation, shuttle service, yes, no? Overnight parking allowed, yes, no? Is there going to be an attendant there or some sort of, what's the security? Is there going to be, what's the landscaping? What's the landscaping maintenance plan going to be? What's the plan for folks who opt not to take the shuttle service and they're walking off the site? I mean, these are things that the board can consider in its own right as the site operating as a commercial parking lot. And then when, and then when the next phase gets figured out and the building goes in, then you look at, it's like, they're going to convert from operating just a commercial standalone lot to, the lot just becomes accessory to the building. But I, my suggestion would be to the board to request that the applicant kind of rework their proposal and put it in those terms. Because then the board can get their head around, how is this thing going to operate? What's the site going to be laid, how is it going to be laid out? And what is the impact on the site and the surrounding areas? I, I don't have a, provided that this site is, is well-developed and well-managed, I actually, you know, I could support this, I don't have a problem with it. But there's a lot of unknowns. And I think, again, just to, to repeat myself, I think you should look at this as how are we going to approve a, a commercial lot for an interim use? And I think you could start to get your heads around that and get more detailed information about the operation of the site. Again, my main concern is just the traffic. 93 spots is a lot. Where are the cars coming from? Where are they going? Are they going down Doane Road? Are they going down Harold Street? Are they going down Gilbert? That area is, has a lot of year-round residents. And most folks might not realize it, but that's, the condominiums are there. That's a huge neighborhood in there. There's a lot of families that live there, mine being one of them. Doane Road is heavily walked, and people bike all year round. I can see them out my window when I'm sitting there watching TV. I see them nine o'clock, 10 o'clock at night. They're out there taking their more, their evening stroll with their flashlights, with their dogs. My kids ride their bikes on there. I walk the dog every morning down to the end. Like I said, I, so I just put that into the public realm that it may not seem like it, but there's a lot of people that walk Doane Road, that cross at that 28 to get down to Kildy, to get down to the beaches, and it's year-round folks. And Don, I'll, I'll wrap up in a sec. And Don, I'll, I'll wrap up in a sec, and Doane Road, we have issues with speed now, so again, I would say that if this moves towards a, an approval, that the board could make good use of recommending, uh, traffic study be peer-reviewed, work with the Traffic Safety Committee and the Police Department, make sure signage is, is taken care of, directing traffic away from the local roads, possibly some speed limit, some of those solar speed limit signs on Doane Road. Again, there's a lot of things that could work with this, provided that there's proper mitigation and some forethought put into it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Sure?
My name is Kate Hecht, I live at 371 Route 28 in Harbor Watch Condos, um, and I agree with people who just spoke, I love what you did with the property to make it healthier and nicer, and hope that you can find a great use for it, I don't want to stop you developing it, I, I agree with the traffic concerns, um, and when I look at the map, if 28 goes like this, Doane and Kildee make an X, and it seems like putting two, an entrance/exit, I know one's two ways and one's one way for the parking lot, but I think people come down that hill really fast, and that's two ways they have to stop. Um, that was part of, maybe if there was just the one area where you go in and out the same place, might be wiser safety issue. Um, and I agree, I think it's a lovely idea to make it a place that people can enjoy the view, but frankly, I really don't see people stopping there to look. You can park there now to look, and they don't use it that much. I'm sure it would be much more attractive with all the beautiful work you have planned, but I just want to say as a neighbor and a butter, that I agree, and I don't want to waste, you know, not waste, but take more of your time, um, to, just want to say that I agree with him. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave, you good? Mary?
I just have one, um, question. We had some good suggestions about some operational items that we could look at. Would you be able to do that before our next meeting and perhaps have some operational recommendations, perhaps to the, to the extent that we get to the point where we're, we're looking at it as being a, a commercial parking for however long it remains is solely a commercial parking? Um, I, I think that's probably a good suggestion.
Okay.
For us to at least have in our pockets when, for our next meeting. Other than that, I, if we're ready for a continuance, promotion?
Anyone else from the public? Okay.
Then I would.
You good? Okay.
I would move that we continue, uh, public hearing for PB 2025 dash zero nine to May 27th, no earlier than 6:30 PM.
Do I have a second? We have a vote in a second, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Up next, we have a case PB 2025 dash 10, Robert Young, Josh Winston, owners seek a two-family use special permit, multifamily use special permit, and site plan review special permit to convert two existing structures with three residential units into five residential units. There'll be no changes to the exterior footprint of the existing buildings. The application's pursuant to the Code of Harwich, Sections 325 dash 51N, Section 325 dash 51Q, Section 325 dash 55, and Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Sections 9 and 11. The property is located at 1,006 Route 28, Assessor's Map 35, Parcel B2 dash 1, and the parcel is approximately 72,802 square feet. The parcel is in the Commercial Highway 1, CH1, Residential Rural RR Districts, and the DEP Zone 2 Water Protection District. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Bob Young.
I'm Josh Winston. We should hopefully be much faster and quicker than the other things, it's just a private home, so we're, uh, is mostly, some of you know, some of you down, we own the SEAL Harvard Center, uh, so we're, um, born and raised in Harwich, and, uh, you know, level of town, and obviously everything we try to do is for the greater good and benefit of all, so, um, one of the things that we are in need of, and we know that the state is in need of, is more workforce housing, and so our residential property that we, um, happens to be, uh, mixed-use property currently, and we are seeking to just change that usage to multifamily so that we can house some of the waitresses and bartenders and other workers that work for us.
A little bit of history is, we bought this property in, uh, November 2019, at the same time we were negotiating to create the SEAL in Harvard Center, and then when the pandemic hit, um, the property downstairs had been an antique shop and a real estate office, and a bedroom, or it was written it out as Airbnb, both upstairs and downstairs, and in the, and in the back house as well. We moved in and owner occupied the back house, and our goal from the beginning when we, once the pandemic moved on and we were able to, um, people weren't stuck in their houses and stuff, that we got impacted by this big demand of workers that wanted to work for us, could find no place to live, or were paying outrageous fee, rent, and so it became our goal here to create a couple of units that could be year-round workforce housing. And so that's what this plan is about. We have, uh, one of our servers lives upstairs, one of our server lives downstairs, I have one of our bartenders that stays with us by time because it's just impossible in the Cape these days. So, we hope that you guys will consider this, we're gonna, we want to create a studio in the front, we want to create another one-bedroom in the back house, we have, we've addressed the parking, I believe, uh, we had some questions from the engineer, which I think our engineer answered today, hopefully. Um, I'm not sure, we think we had a complete file, we're willing to do whatever's needed. We would just like to, um, be considered to get the zoning now for multifamily so we can move and begin to start with the building permits, septic, what have you.
Most importantly, the, the original plan that we had, uh, tossed around with Christine, had included maybe a bump out of some kind, we decided, opted against that just to work within the confines of our existing footprints now, so.
And we have a very unusual lot. It's all big, up in the front, 200s feet, but it goes way back, it's got a little bit of sand area.
Right, so essentially, our, if you know Ridgevale, and you know Charles, those two neighborhoods, those two streets, streets are where we face 28, and those are, um, both go on either side, both, uh, are parallel.
Those are your east and west boundaries.
So, exactly, we actually, our property serves as the easement between the houses in those two neighborhoods.
It's above.
One, uh, um, the Gomes family sold one, uh, like a little panhandle cutout, uh, which some of you may have on that, one of your mouths, of, um, the property, uh, which they're putting, uh, I think a septic tank in there now or something, um, but the rest of it is all forest. We, the, and we'd like, our intent is to eventually work with, with conservation, to preserve that, the trees that actually connect to the town forest and the bike path behind us goes the entire length of Ridgeville Road, so, um, we're only, you know, we're only occupying and, and sort of internally developing the existing, uh, buildings that are antique at the, at the front of the property. The rest of it, you know, we would really like to eventually preserve and keep as forested land, so, that's our intent.
Okay, Christine?
Thank you. So, before you is a case PB 2025 dash 10, for site plan review, two-family special permit, multifamily use permit, as well as a waiver that was also added, um, to the packet tonight, um, and I can, um, explain that, um, in a moment. So, um, the applicants are Robert Young and Josh Winston, um, the project is located in the Commercial Highway, um, uh, CH1, uh, as well as the rural, the residential rural zoning districts and DEP Zone 2 Water Protection District. Uh, there, um, the applicants are proposing to renovate two existing buildings, and the lot area of the site is 72,802 square feet. The property location has three existing buildings on the site, according to the assessor records, the front building closest to Route 28 consists of two residential units, as well as a commercial office space. Uh, the, at one time, the applicants did receive a mixed-use, uh, building permit, and they would like to convert that to a multifamily, uh, unit consisting of three one-bedroom apartments. The rear building consists of a garage and, and was permitted with a one, two-bedroom residential unit, and the total size of the building is 1,133 square feet. Uh, the applicant, again, is, um, proposing to convert the existing, uh, building into a two-family, uh, special permit. After consulting with the zoning compliance officer and town council, um, because multifamily use is not permitted, we define multifamily dwelling, um, in our table use code, so, uh, that is why they are asking for a multifamily special permit for the one building and a two-family special permit for the second, and because both buildings are, um, existing, um, the applicant has asked for a waiver from the 800-square-foot minimum for the two units as part of the two-family special permit, um, and, um, so it's not anticipated that there would be an increase in traffic relative to the renovation and conversion of the two buildings, um, yeah, because there are only actually two units being added to the site. Um, the stormwater management and drainage, VHB did do an evaluation, and Dan, I did forward Dan's comments to, um, Steve, uh, he was also very comfortable with, um, approving this, uh, project on, um, on a conditional approval, uh, that he's happy to take a look at the drainage, drainage calculations, um, um, and to provide his approval, um, as part of, um, the planning board's condition, uh, condition, rather. And, um, the septic system is, um, is located in the, uh, DEP Zone 2, and so therefore, um, the number of bedrooms are, are limited to one bedroom per 10,000 square feet, um, according to DEP Zone 2 regulations, and, um, the applicant has enough acreage for a maximum of seven bedrooms, and they are currently asking for six bedrooms, um, total, combining both, um, both special permit buildings. And, um, so there, there are, the, all of the buildings are also connected to town water, um, there are several, um, requirements for multifamily special permit, uh, that the applicant has met, uh, I've identified them in the, um, staff report, and the only, um, issue that, um, that the proposal didn't comply with was the 800-square-foot requirement for both units as part of the two-family special, special permit, and so I would recommend to grant the waiver for that, um, so that the applicants can move forward with the project. Um, and, uh, let me see, I don't, I'm not anticipating that this will have any impact on a butters, um, I can also do the PowerPoint, um, Matt, if you got a chance, uh, we'll go to the next slide, this is Harwich, which I didn't know the, earlier today, this evening. So, next, and so the property is a lo, is locate, is located along Route 28, um, I'm sorry.
I'm just gonna get out and do a visual demonstration. So, you can see.
So, we're gonna move it, so we can move the next one.
This is the house, but that red dot and that entire stripe that goes back at all four, that's our, that's our plan, that would be there. So, we're only talking about the development of this, of that, whole stripe up the middle will be conservation.
So, it goes all the way, the, the property goes, as the applicant indicated, goes fairly far back, um.
And again, Ridgevale to the left and Charles Street to the right.
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
And we're staying within the first 200 feet.
Yep. So, this is a closer look at the property, um, from Route 28, um, going, going north.
They just, they just started clear-cutting that little cutout today, that, so, but you can't do anything about it, so.
So, you can tell that the, the buildings are, are very close to Route 28, um, and the back of the property provides ample open space, um, and, so next, so this, these are the front building, the building in the back, and then there's a garage, uh, to the, to the right, and.
It's more of a barn, it's got a historic look and.
It's cool, rest of it.
And so this is the proposed site plan, um, or existing conditions, rather, and, um, so there were two, two-bedroom units and a commercial unit, and, um, or, I'm sorry, two, one two-bedroom unit, one bedroom unit and a commercial office space in the front building, and then one, uh, two-bedroom apartment and a garage in the rear building, and, oop, I guess that's it. And so they do have, uh, they are providing eight parking spots, uh, which is ample for, um, per the zoning code, um, and if anyone else has any questions regarding, um, the application?
Chief LeBlanc had one question about getting access back there, but he and, uh, and Bruce Young approved.
Yes, um, my apologies, apologies. We did send the application to all department heads, and, um, Chief LeBlanc and Bruce Young did, uh, comment that they didn't have any issues with the width of the driveway and the access to the rear of the buildings. Uh, they have noted, um, some of the limitations that felt very, the current, the current access as it is. Uh, the, the only stipulation that they did comment on is that if there are any septic upgrades, uh, the septic tanks will, uh, the fire department will be, uh, will need to, um, see the plans so that they, um, are assured that the, um, septic tanks, um, are rated so that trucks can go over them.
Over them, yeah.
And, and we are gonna be dark-skY, clump of pie with all new lighting?
Yes, um, that, that's correct, that was also part of the, uh, plan.
Go ahead. Two quick questions for me, um, it sounded like there's just one waiver that we would need to approve.
Yes.
Uh, so I just wanted to run the language by all of you, if we approved a waiver from the requirement of an 800-square-foot per-unit requirement for the two-family special permit, is that accurate? It seems like that was accurate.
Yes.
Just wanted to confirm, that's all. And then, um, did you need any changes to any plans that were submitted, or are you waiting on any plans?
The only thing that we're waiting on is, um, the, the applicant, um, the applicant's engineer did respond to VHB today, um, and I'm waiting to hear back from VHB, uh, but he, he did say he didn't have any issues if the planning board, uh, moved forward to approve it, and he can also work with the applicant's engineer relative to the drainage in stormwater runoff.
So, can we just come back with the building permit, bring for the?
Right.
Are we being consistent if we approve, or do you think we need a continuance?
Um, I don't believe it's going to change anything on the site plan, but, uh, because they're going to be more internal in terms of the drainage calculations and some of the issues, however, it's, I don't want to, um, it's, it's at your discretion if you feel that you need to be more, um, that this is in, in keeping with, uh, practice.
Just wanted to ask the board members.
Could I make one comment on that? The back huge house was built in 2007, but with permit, so it went through the whole process with drainage, and you, the town was satisfied with just the crushed rock, didn't require a drainage plan, and so we tried to find that, went through the, all the old files and the records, and we could find no drainage. we could find no drainage plan because it wasn't called for. So we have addressed the drainage plan and, you know, we're just going back and forth on margin engineering, what the town wants, but they're on the same page.
Where are you gonna move the shed to?
We were probably gonna just take it down.
Destroy it.
Yeah. It's a cool looking shed, but it's in the way.
The she shed.
Yeah. And save the trees.
Yep.
Would it be appropriate to add a condition to just say that the, that a stormwater plan shall be approved by the, by the town's consulting engineer prior to occupancy permit, prior to building permit?
Prior to a building permit with the renovation.
Are there any comments from the public at all? Step right up, sir.
Hi, my name's Chris Trummel. I'm here with James Mashoke and we're representing First Congregational Church. We were notified as an abutter, but we're not an abutter. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to mention that. And then Jeep and I would like to comment that these guys as operators of the SEAL have been excellent neighbors. So if their stewardship of this property is consistent with that behavior in favor of the community, then I don't think you, you would be wrong in supporting their improvements to allow for housing for their employees.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Entertaining motion?
I move that we close the public hearing.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, wave of vote in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I move that the planning board vote to adopt the following proposed findings of fact. One, the applicant is Robert Young and Josh Winston, owners. Two, the subject property is one zero zero six, Route twenty-eight, map thirty-five, parcel B two dash one. Three, the property is located in the Commercial Highway One Residential Rural Zoning Districts and the DEP Zone Two Water Protection Districts. Four, the application for a two-family use special permit, multifamily use special permit and site plan review special permit was filed with the town clerk on March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. Five, site plan proposed conditions by Dan Croto, P E, civil engineer number four six two five three dated March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five stamped in with the town clerk on March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. Six, two-family special permit. A, the project does meet the forty thousand square foot minimum. B, the building is connected by the same roof. C, the project does meet the required parking. Seven, multifamily special permit. A, the building does contain three units with adequate entrances and bedroom sizes of one hundred and twenty square feet per code, per the code of the town of Harwich. B, the project is on town water. C, the project meets the required parking. D, the project meets the required open space. E, the project shall comply with all Title V septic system requirements per Board of Health approval. Eight, in addition, the board finds that site plan review, A, that relative to site plan review, A, the use as developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. B, the specific site is an appropriate location for such a use, structure, or condition. C, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. And D, adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided for the proper operation of the proposed use. This includes a provision of appropriate sewage treatment facilities which provide for denitrification when the permit granting authority deems such facilities necessary for protection of drinking water supply wells, ponds, or saltwater invasions.
Hey, we have a motion on the findings of fact. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
So I move, I move that the planning board vote to approve the following waiver from the requirement of an eight hundred square foot per unit requirement for the two-family special permit proposed.
We have a vote on a waiver or a motion on a waiver. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
And then finally, I move that the planning board vote to approve with conditions case number PB twenty twenty-five dash ten, Robert Young and Josh Winston, one zero zero six, Route twenty-eight, for approval of a site plan review special permit, a two-family use special permit and a multifamily use special permit pursuant to section three twenty-five dash fifty-one N Q and three twenty-five dash fifty-five of the codes, of the code of the town of Harwich for the property located at one zero zero six, Route twenty-eight, map thirty-five, parcel B two dash one in the Commercial Highway One Residential Rural Zoning Districts and the DEP Zone Two Water Protection Districts. This decision is based on the, on the findings of facts, of the previous findings of fact with the conditions, with the following conditions of approval. One, the applicant is Robert Young and Josh Winston, the applicants are Robert Young and Josh Winston, owners. Two, the subject property is one zero zero six, Route twenty-eight, map thirty-five, parcel B two dash one. Three, the property is located in the Commercial Highway One Residential Rural Zoning Districts and the DEP Zone Two Water Protection Districts. Four, the application for a two-family use special permit, multifamily use special permit and a site plan review special permit was filed with the town, with the town clerk on March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. Five, site plan proposed conditions by Dan P. Croto, P E, civil engineer number four six two five three dated March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five stamped in with the town clerk on March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. Six, a revised site plan shall be approved by the town's consulting engineer and the town planner prior to the final certificate of inspection by the building department. Seven, the proposed project does meet the crit, does not meet the criteria for all three special permits, I'm sorry, let me repeat this. Seven, the proposed project does meet the criteria for all three special permits with the exception of the eight hundred square foot per unit requirement per the two-family special permit, however, waiver was previously approved by the planning board. Eight, the proj, the project parcel is limited to a maximum total of seven bedrooms. The project shall comply with all Board of Health requirements for approval pertaining to the Title V septic system. Nine, this decision shall run with the property, conditions of approval shall be binding on future owners. Ten, the special permit shall not take effect until a copy of the decision bearing the certification of the town clerk that twenty days have elapsed after the filing of the decision and either that no appeal has been filed or that an appeal has been filed within such time period is recorded in the registry of deeds and is indexed under the name of the property owner of record and the parcel address. Eleven, the special permit shall lapse within two years, which shall not include such time required to or await the determination of an appeal referred to in general law, chapter forty-eight, section seventeen from the grant thereof, if a substantial use thereof has not sooner commenced except for good cause or in the case of a permit for construction, if construction is not begun by such date except for good cause. Twelve, changes to the site not authorized under this decision will require further planning board review and modification to this decision. Thirteen, the applicant shall conform to the inspection certification and as-built plan requirements outlined pursuant to the code of the town of Harwich. And fourteen, a stormwater drainage plan shall be approved by the town's consulting engineer prior to the issuance of any building permit.
So we have a motion on the special permit. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Do we want to go out, out of order?
What, what's, yeah.
For the public meeting?
Sure.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely.
I'm gonna jump ahead a little bit and go to the public meeting. Case PB twenty twenty-five dash twelve, Daniel and Jessica Turk, owners through their agent, Paul Sweetser, PLS, seek endorsement of an approval not required plan of land to divide one existing lot located two forty Pleasant Bay Road into two lots, one of which will be a Panhandle lot. Lot one, proposed parcel is approximately forty thousand eight hundred ninety-four square feet. Lot two, proposed parcel is twenty-nine thousand five hundred eighty square feet. ZBA variance case number twenty twenty-five dash zero one. The parcels in the residential rural RR district.
Paul Sweetser here, listening to everything tonight. I think these, this, it's an A and R. These should be simple. I want to go to bed.
Yeah.
If there's any questions, I mean Christine and I have been going back and forth on the whole thing and I think we've answered all the questions.
Yes, unfortunately, my printer didn't, my computer didn't allow me to print out my staff report, but just to give you a quick summary, the applicant, the Panhandle lot is to the north here and what they would like to do is to remove the property line here to create this as a building lot. And they did go through the zoning board of appeals to get a variance for the frontage for that parcel. And so because of that decision, I would recommend that this does meet the minimum criteria for an A and R and that this is not a subdivision, this is, does not, this is not a subdivision and I would encourage the board to endorse the A and R as presented.
Anything from the board?
Thanks, Mary. I picture you guys wish you had an engineering department here now.
Don't we?
Yeah.
Like to entertain a motion?
So I move that we approve the A and R for, I don't even know what number one.
PB twenty twenty-five dash twelve.
Thank you for PB twenty twenty-five dash twelve. Daniel and Jessica Turk, owners through their agent, Paul Sweetser, for a plan of lands in East Harwich, Massachusetts, as prepared for Daniel C. Turk and Jessica Turk dated March third, twenty twenty-five, revised April seventh, twenty twenty-five. Scale one inch equals forty feet, prepared by Paul E. Sweetser, professional land surveyor, PO box eleven forty-six, Dennis Port, Mass. O two six three nine.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous.
There you go, eight thirty.
I almost seconded it.
Up next, we have PB twenty twenty-five dash thirteen, Angelina Chalaca, owner through their agent, Paul Sweetser, PLS, seek endorsement of an approval not required plan of land to divide one existing lot located three thirty-nine Main Street into three lots, one of which will be a Panhandle lot. Lot one, proposed parcel is approximately forty thousand one hundred square feet. Lot two, proposed parcel is fifty-nine thousand one hundred ninety-five upland square feet, parentheses, one, one thousand five hundred eighty-nine wetland square feet. Lot three, proposed parcel is sixty-nine thousand nine hundred eighty-eight upland square feet, parentheses, five forty-one, five hundred forty-one wetland square feet. Parcel is in the residential low-density RL district. Mr. Sweetser.
This property goes back in the Ranio family, Albert Ranio, just to give a little history. And obviously, we have enough area and I would, I would contend that we actually have furnished in the back there on the traveled way because that also is an ancient way that actually gives furnished to a few other houses along the way in the back. But we have a Panhandle access, which makes it nice, keep everything up front. And if there's any questions, I mean you already spilled it all out.
Yeah.
Yes, so again, this is going from one lot to three, all of, AKA Chatham Road, Kelly Street and as Mr. Sweetser indicated, it's three lot, one lot to three lots, one will be access for Panhandle lot. All access for a public or private way has to be part of the A and R. The property that, or the cart path that Mr. Sweetser referenced is not a road, is not a private road or a public road, so I want to clarify that for the record. There's no frontage off of, off of that cart path, so I just want to be clear on that. We are approving or endorsing, my recommendation is to endorse the A and R because there's adequate frontage off of Chatham Road, Kelly Street. And we did work with the Conservation Commission and the, Mr. Sweetser also did work with the Conservation Agent as well in to clarify the wetlands, so there is ample upland, so I would recommend to endorse the, the A and R as presented.
Any comment from the board?
I move that we endorse the approval not required plan, PB twenty twenty-five dash thirteen, as planned lands in Harwich, Massachusetts, is prepared for Angelina Ranio Chalaca, dated January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, scale one inch equals fifty feet, prepared by Paul E. Sweetser, professional land surveyor, PO box one one four six, Dennis Port, Mass. O two six three nine.
So we have a motion for the approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous and thank you.
See, the other girl tired up there too.
Thank you.
Usually, on a lot of the boards, we usually collect the plans that night. Is that something that you guys are doing or do we have to pick them up?
We'll have, we'll spring them down to the town clerk in the morning. I will have them ready for all of you to sign off on them tonight.
Okay.
Perfect.
And these are the two marars and the two paper copies.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so.
And Paul, I'll call you in the morning.
Oh yeah, so I'm leaving these here then? Okay.
I have to sign it before.
Oh yeah, okay, okay.
You still have other ones.
Yeah, no, I know. I saw that. I had to go home.
Yes.
I'm sorry you have to stay, but I have to go back and work on a plan and chat until you're gonna be filed tomorrow.
Yep.
Thank you for.
Thank you.
Staying. Bye, Paul.
Have a good night, Jim.
Bye.
I'm super sensing you're over.
Really? I wonder if it's still.
And.
The cuts are done?
The zoning bylaw amendment?
Yes, so there are only two slight amendments to the language that we had given you back in March and, and I think this was per, one of the recommendations from the board. So Matt, let me know when you're ready. Who's the accessory ADU zoning bylaw presentation?
Oh, should we hold on?
Oh, my kids would be cutting it down. No, we don't need this.
Just a question, we're in a, this was a public hearing, correct?
Yes.
So, so he needs to reopen the public hearing then?
Correct. It was continued from April eighth. For.
Did I just make a motion or?
And the agenda is in, I mean, the public hearing notice is in the agenda, is on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay. Continued from April eighth, twenty twenty-five, zoning bylaw amendment, accessory dwelling unit ADU. We're reopening the public meeting.
Hearing.
Hearing. Thank you.
I don't know if we have time.
I tried, I tried, I tried.
Yeah, I'll load soon.
We can come back after this.
There's a lot of findings.
Okay, so I did have a presentation that I was going to present tonight, but I'll give just a brief, the attendant version of it, the briefer version. So in, over this past summer, the governor and the state legislature passed the Affordable Homes Act, which also included changing chapter forty-eight to include protected accessory dwelling units as of right in all residential zoning districts and the. And the definition that the state is using for this protected use status and is that the accessory dwelling unit is a self-contained, give me one second, is, is a self-contained housing unit inclusive of sleeping, cooking, and sanitary facilities? Yeah, thank you. On the same lot as a principal dwelling, subject to otherwise applicable dimensional and parking requirements that maintain a separate entrance, either directly from outside or through a hallway corridor shared, shared with the principal dwelling, sufficient to meet the requirements of the state building code for safe egress. And two, the ADU is, is, can, can be half or nine, or up to nine hundred square feet of, or, I'm sorry.
Fifty percent or.
Fifty percent of the principal dwelling unit, or up to nine hundred square feet, whichever is smaller. That's being defined by the state. And so just some of the changes for the ADU, for the Affordable Homes Act, so we can just go through the next slide?
Use your mouse.
Oh, okay. So it, so basically, what an ADU is, is a small residential living space located on the same lot as a principal dwelling. The ADUs can be internal, within the existing dwelling, attached to a principal, or completely detached, say like above a garage or a guest house. The maximum size of the ADU is no more than half of the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, or nine hundred square feet, whichever is smaller. That's being defined by the state.
When they say gross square, gross square area, are they including unimproved space in the gross, or is that just improved space?
I believe it's just habitable space.
Okay.
So it's the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, so. On August sixth, 2024, Governor Haley signed the Affordable Homes Act into law. The ADUs are protected just like religious institutions, schools, childcare facilities, and agriculture under mass general law, chapter 48, section three. And as part of this, municipalities cannot unreasonably regulate ADUs. And so just some of the changes that will impact Harwich, as you know, Harwich was ahead of the curve and allowed accessory dwelling units up to a thousand square feet as of right in 2023. And Harwich did require that the ADUs or principal dwelling would have to be, either would have to be owner occupied, so that owner occupancy, so, so part of the changes, which are consistent with Harwich, the first one, we do require that the occupancy, not family relationship of the ADU, or the, require owner occupancy, which we did, and we cannot, no longer do that. Require a special permit or other discretionary zoning approval for use or rental of an ADU. Require more than one parking spot for the ADU, and so there are other strictures for, for cities and towns that have, you know, ferry terminals, train stations, and what have you. And then require, require any parking for an ADU located within a half mile of a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, or bus. Municipalities can impose reasonable restrictions and requirements for Title V subject requirements, dimensional setbacks in bulk in height of the structure, as well as short-term rentals. And so the, the state, part of the definition that we're proposing is the accessory dwelling unit is self-contained housing unit inclusive of sleeping. Again, I just went through that really quick, so the construction of the accessory dwelling unit must be in conformity with state building code, Title V of the sanitary code, and lawful under all provisions applicable by the town's health, buildings, zoning, and other local laws and regulations. There should be at least one off-street, off-street parking. The principal dwelling, the ADU, and the lot on which they are located must be in common ownership or single ownership. The ADU shall be limited to, by a lease for a minimum of eleven consecutive months, and we, we can include language, and that's one area that I did want to talk, talk, talk about this evening to, to see if, if the board would be interested in imposing that restriction on the protected ADU, on the protected ADU by right building permit. So that was one suggestion I did have, but that's something we can talk about. And then, no, that's it. So for the protected, as, for Harwich, because we had an accessory unit up to a thousand square feet, this board wanted to allow an accessory to, what we're now calling an accessory apartment, up to a thousand square feet, but by special permit through the planning board in all residentially zoned districts, and the requirements that were previously approved, like restricting owner occupancy, would still be upheld. And so that's, so those were two questions that I had for this evening regarding the protected accessory apart, not the protected, but the accessory apartment. Originally, we were proposing that it would be nine hundred and one square feet to a thousand, but I modified the language to now say up to a thousand. Is that a recommendation of the board, or a wish of the board?
So I like it that way, only because then we're not creating a trap for people where they're, you know, it's too little, and they're, they're stuck in the middle.
Okay.
I do wonder what my colleagues think about the, still, whether we keep the owner occupancy required in one of the two units. Would you, would you still do that, or would you let it, would you let it go in this instance where the others aren't going to have the restriction?
Well, the, the, the by right.
You're still going to have, right, the by right doesn't have it. A special permit, you're, they're still going to, they're going to have to come before you anyway on it. I just, I, I wonder whether we, whether we keep that restriction in or not, and I'm just, I'm just raising it as a devil's advocate, see what you guys all thought?
I'd be curious what other towns have.
It's, it's been very, not a lot of town, not many towns are restricting it, so.
So when we talked about having as big as we could, a thousand square feet, why go back? I agree with that. We also talked about this limited lease and stuff, that we have no way to police it, right? There's not anyone who would go and check it and whatever else. Is it too much? I mean, I think the data that Christine shared last time was, they were, there have been eighteen applied for and two built.
Mm-hmm.
And the.
I'm one of them.
And it's one of them. So the, but the objective overall is to let people build these, not make it harder, so.
I would agree a hundred percent. I mean, it's, it's a hundred square feet difference between the by right and the, the one that you, you're asking them to come before the board for. It's like, why make it so much different? It's nice that they could actually get, have an opportunity or an option to go beyond the restriction of the state law, and I think we're doing people a favor by doing that if they're, they happen to be outside that number, but, you know, to all of a sudden do that and then.
Put the restrictions back on.
Right.
So that's kind of how I was feeling, too, like not require the owner, not require the owner occupancy on the special permit.
We can't, we can't police it. You know, there's no way to do it.
I mean, the building department would have to.
And we hardly have.
Or come up with a way, or the, or the health department would have to have a, you know, something to do.
Hiring a person, or you're, you know.
It just seems that if you're not doing it on one, why would you do it on the other?
That's the problem with regulations. You have to, you have to give people due process, and then you have to enforce them.
We can't enforce them.
Yeah, if you can't do those two things, then you can't really be in the business of creating regulation.
We're not trying to restrict.
No, we're trying to encourage.
The construction of these, and they, trying to encourage them.
By offering an option to go beyond the nine hundred square feet, I think is, is doing exactly what you're talking about. We're giving them more than, rather than taking away.
Agreed, agreed. Okay.
All right. Yes, it does.
Remove those restrictions and, and do that up to the thousand, but it's by special permit and not as a matter of right.
Correct.
Because it's an accessory apartment, not an ADU by the state definition.
Correct.
It doesn't seem onerous in any way to get that, so.
But I would ask if, if each of you could go and look at the language that I, we had sent around, just to make sure that you're okay.
What timeframe do you have?
I'm still sort of learning that, that we do need to have, if we have to make any changes, they will be doing some mock changes for amendments, so I would like to have those amendments ready for town meeting.
Is this going to be done, done, is it?
My understanding is that this, this warrant, this is on the warrant, so if we need to tweak anything.
What has to be an amendment?
It has to be through an amendment, and staff would, or administration would appreciate having the amendments at the ready so that they, so that.
When do you need it?
To speak to it at town meeting.
So we need to, do we need to keep this open until before town meeting?
Oh.
Because it's a public meeting.
Our next meeting is town meeting, correct?
Correct, yes. We could. I, I wasn't sure of the process. Other communities had closed the public hearing and just had the language for their.
In the amendment?
Yeah, well, in their warrant for town meeting.
If we need to provide a vote that supports an amendment on town meeting floor.
Could we do that tonight?
I think we probably could do it tonight, or we could, or we could do it immediately before town meeting would be the only other option, right?
We've done that before, where we've had a meeting, a quick, like five-minute meeting before, like in one of the side rooms.
Because we have to have, we have to have the public hearing, and we have to make a recommendation to town meeting, right?
Yes, yes.
We can't do it tonight because we don't have the language for the amendment?
Well, we do, but if, it's just removing, it's striking one area, it's striking two areas. It's striking the nine hundred, nine oh one to a thousand square feet, taking that out to say up to a thousand square feet, and then we're taking out the owner, we're removing the owner occupancy requirement.
So we could vote on that tonight?
I didn't.
Well, if we meet for those, for that purpose, don't, doesn't that meeting have to be announced?
Yes.
It does. We always post a meeting.
Typically, we always post a meeting before.
Just in case we.
So that we can do something like that if we need to? And if something comes up in the middle of the, of the thing, we could always ask for.
And we keep the meeting open.
Yeah.
And, yeah, it has to be accessible to the public, so it can't be tiny little room, six people.
It, it's always, it's always announced and, and scheduled for one of the hearing rooms, or one of the other rooms over there.
At the community center.
And it's always advertised, so, I mean, do we know what, do we know the only changes we need?
I think we just said them.
Those were the only two that, that I had gotten feedback, so I just want to make sure that the board is okay with just, I, those two I don't have a problem with. I want to make sure that the other language is, is.
So it's striking, it's striking the nine hundred and one to a thousand.
Up to a thousand.
And replacing it with up to a thousand square feet.
Yes.
And it's striking the.
Owner occupancy requirement.
Is it also.
By the lease?
Owner occupancy of one of the two units?
Mm-hmm.
And is it striking the six-month?
Eleven-month.
Eleven-month lease.
Or the six-month?
It was a six-month lease.
It was a six-three thing.
Is it, is it, is it deleting the six-month requirement, six-month lease requirement on the, on the special permit ADU, special permit accessory apartment?
If we're adding language rather than just striking and deleting, doesn't, doesn't it have to be run by the, by town council?
I will send them the, the amendments just for, for them to check, but I, I have a feeling these changes are not going to be that significant, but I will, I'll, town council will be evaluating any, any changes, so.
And all of the changes are to make it easier to have one of these permitted?
So if, if the board agrees, let's just do it before town meeting.
Okay. That sounds great.
Just to, we'll have all the ducks in a row, and then it'll be a.
Okay.
Quick vote, so we should keep this open then, right?
I would think we would keep it open, but I can't swear to that. Are we on the first day or the second day?
I, I'm not sure. I can find out next week, but if we can continue it, at least to the first night, that would be.
So if we continue it to a date certain, we couldn't, we couldn't have a special meeting before the date that we pick. So if we pick May, May fifth, we can't then address it again before May fifth, and I don't know that we would have an opportunity to address it next week anyway, but.
Do I hear a motion?
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm asking first, does, does, does anybody want to try and squeeze in a, a quick half an hour meeting next week? I couldn't do it on Tuesday. That's my only question.
I can't, I can't. Next week is chaos.
Then the answer's, then I think the answer's no, right?
Yeah.
So I would move that we continue the public hearing on the AD, the zoning bylaw amendment, accessory dwelling units to, I believe it's Monday, May fifth, 2025.
No, earlier than.
No, earlier than.
Six-thirty?
Five?
Five o'clock.
Are we convening at seven for town meeting?
Yeah.
Then I would say six?
Six.
Yeah.
Earlier than six.
Earlier than six PM on Monday, May fifth, 2025.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All is in favor?
Not a religious hall.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Why do we have to own that accessory apartment?
Protected accessory dwelling unit.
P, what's our acronym, P?
The last, last item on the agenda is the.
Paydo.
Local comprehensive plan update from the town planner.
Well, we are moving forward with the local comprehensive plan. It has been moved out from this town meeting to a special town meeting in the fall, and we are now in, in the process of evaluating all of the action items and prioritizing all of the action items, so.
Okay.
That's where we are.
Will it be a one-item town meeting?
I don't know. I have a feeling there might be, you know, I, I'm, yeah, there may be a couple of other items to, to address at town meeting. Yeah.
Okay.
So I also want to, I, I was remiss in welcoming our new, newest planning board member, Annie Newman, so Annie, thank you.
Welcome, Annie.
Yeah, welcome aboard.
Stay till nine.
Yes. I believe.
Have a long night.
Yes. Yes.
We know how to do a baptism by fire, don't we?
Yeah. I believe I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Sorry.